Good evening. It's August 1st, 2022, and this is the regular monthly board meeting of the Concord School Board. I'll start off with the attendance, please. Ms. Cannon?
Certainly. Ms. Hastings?
Here.
Ms. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Weinberg?
Here.
Ms. West?
Here.
Mr. Cotton?
Here.
Mr. Richards?
Here.
And I am here. We have a quorum, sir.
Very good. So, everyone has the agenda in front of them. Hopefully you had a chance to take a look at it prior to tonight's meeting. At this point, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Or does anyone have any changes or amendments they would like to present?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Walsh and seconded by Mr. Cotton. Any other discussion? In that case, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. So, first thing on the agenda that I would like to do is we are fortunate enough in August to have one of our student representatives for the year join us. She's our new representative, Sophia Anderson. Welcome, Sophia.
Thank you.
We appreciate the fact that you're willing to help us out on the school board. We look forward to your insights and your advice as well as your reports. Anybody else want to say anything?
Welcome.
Everybody can, we all welcome you. So do not be shy about, you know, raising your hand that you would like to speak because we want to hear your perspective as well. Thank you very much.
Can Sophia tell us a little bit about herself, what year she's in?
Sure. I'm Sophia Anderson. I'm going into my junior year at Concord High School, a part of the class of 2024. I was kind of told to talk a little bit about my aspirations and my achievements. So, I love school. I love trying to do the best I can. I've received a few awards for academic excellence in the sciences, Spanish, and music subjects. For the past freshman and sophomore year, I've been on the high honor roll. I love to play soccer, ski. Math and science are definitely my favorite subjects, and I hope to pursue a career in chemistry. And I like to spend my weekends with my family boating. I have my boating license, and that's kind of my favorite things to do. But I've been in a few student leadership programs as well, Hobie and Capital Area Student Leadership, CASL. And I'm also a part of CHS Live at school. So. Thank you. I'm just getting this.
Just a few awards in various academics and music.
What, did you go to school in elementary school in Runlet as well?
I went to Krista McAuliffe for elementary school, but I did go to St. John Regional School for middle school. So kind of bounce back and forth.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Well, very good. With that, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the regular monthly meeting of July 5th and then special board meetings that were non-public on the 13th, 18th, and 27th. Does anyone have any amendments, corrections, or modifications to any of those items? And if not, I'd like a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walsh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hastings. If there are any further discussion? In that case, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda minutes pass. With that, we'll move on to our next item, which is recognitions and reports. First up is the superintendent's report. Superintendent?
Thank you. Can I use a skip? You're probably wondering who's taking notes tonight, right?
Yes, I was.
I knew you were going to ask that question. As you know, we were, well, yes, Gina's taking the notes.
Well, Gina always makes sure that, you know, she has all the critical details, but we also have a backup.
Gina has bailed us many times as we check our notes with her notes, so we appreciate that. You may or may not know that we were able to find a secretary, an executive secretary to my office, and so Bridget Edinger from, actually, an employee on the district. She worked at Runlet Middle School as one of the administrative assistants in the office, and so she'll be working in my office. She's on vacation this week, actually. And I shouldn't have done this, but I did call her today. I had a question. And so I called her, and she called me back from Aruba. So, good for her. She worked hard all year long. She also did the Title I program this summer, so she was working there half a day. And then when we brought her on, she worked some hours for us in the office, so we're thrilled to have her. But while she's away and as she gets adjusted to her new role, Lyndon is going to take the notes for us for tonight. I'm sure she's home listening, or she will watch the video tomorrow, so we'll be well-covered. Gina, I hope that helps you out a little bit.
Very good. First, I'd like to thank Lyndon.
Yeah, go ahead.
For coming out of retirement to take our notes. And I want to welcome Bridget and look forward to seeing her next month.
Yeah, thank you. She's looking forward to it, too. So she's pretty excited about her new position. So we're pleased, I'm thrilled to have her. And I also like the fact that she's, you know, knows the district. She's been in the district for a while, knows a lot of the families, and knows a lot of the systems and procedures that we use. So I think it will be a nice transition from Lyndon, who after 14 years, she certainly provided a lot of support to the school district. So I think we'll move along nicely. Just a quick update on the agenda. I just want to make you aware that the data governance will be postponed because the audit report, of which you got some preliminary findings, is not totally finished, and PM did not want to bring it forward until it was complete, and we had both reviewed it and to bring it to you and put in your packet. So not having it, it's a pretty comprehensive report, and not having it in your packet didn't make sense tonight. So we're going to hold off on that, and hopefully we'll have it ready for you for the September meeting. So just a little bit of work to get ready for tonight. Couple things for tonight. I wanted to talk a little bit about our summer programs. High School has had a four-day orientation for freshmen, very well received. I think you heard that when we went to Deerfield, the students shared their comments about the orientation. They changed it up a little bit this year to go to four days, broke it up into a multiple session, so it wasn't like the whole freshman class was there, but broken up into three groups, three groups, Michael. So a wonderful way for the kids to really acclimate themselves to Concord High School. I think it relieves some of the anxiety that youngsters may feel as they go into a very large high school, and especially with, and especially for the Deerfield, our Deerfield students who do not know the youngsters from Concord. So that was a very positive event for everyone. Title I has finished, their summer school with math and reading and lots of activities for the youngsters across the district. And continuing right now are extended school year programs for our students. That'll be on for another week before that program is finished. In the meantime, in come the kindergarten youngsters. They'll be having what we call their boot camp, so that they will spend time at their elementary schools across the district, acclimating themselves and to the procedures and all the things that happen at an elementary school. So the principals are all geared up for that, and we'll see them. I think they start, I know at Krista McAuliffe this week, I talked to Chris Gallo, and they'll start this week at Krista, this week and next week. They break it up into small groups. One of the things I know you always like to know is what are the numbers in our summer program? I'll have that for you in September. I don't quite have it all out back from all of the schools, and so I will have a report for you on attendance over the course of the five and six weeks of summer programming that we offer in Concord for our students. I'll do that at the September meeting. This is a busy time for us with grants. The grants are coming in. We've received allocations thus far for 21C. We'll bring these allocations to the various committees, just to update you. The IDA and the preschool grant are in. They've already started writing those grants and getting ready for the opening for next year. The adult diploma program, we also received that grant. Perkins Grant, which as you know is associated with CRTC and our Career and Technical Center, so that grant is in, and the Title I grant we've received. We have not yet heard from Title III, which is the grant that we have for our English-language learners, or Title IV, which is often associated with our innovation kinds of programs. This afternoon, as late as just before it came down, we got notice that we did receive our Title II grant, which is all of our supports for professional development for the schools. So we just got notice that that grant came through. Safe School Grant, as we talked about, there was an ability for the district to request at least $100,000 for each school building, of which we did. We had eight different grants. The reason we don't have a new school, just don't want any surprises here. The second grant, we have two grants for Concord High School, one for security, door security, and one for communication. And so we broke that up into two separate grants. But all the other elementary schools, we submitted grants on their behalf for the $100,000.
When do we expect to hear back?
Great question. And we expect to hear that. What they said was near the end of the summer. So whatever the definition of end of the summer is, I'm hoping that it's in August. I'd really like to get going on it, but I don't control that. Now remember, this piece was competitive. We jumped in right away so that we could get early notice of the grants if we were awarded. If we don't get the award at this point, at this juncture, we will go into the second round. So it's not done deal yet. We'll just replace the grants that we submitted with updating the new ones in round two.
Just for clarification on the high school, the two grants, it's still limited to $100,000?
Right, right. The building aid application, as I've mentioned several times, that was submitted in a timely fashion. We anticipated meeting with the DOE last Thursday at Runlet for a conditions evaluation meeting. I think I might have mentioned that in one of my notes to you. That is a review by the department of all the conditions that we alluded to in our grant proposal of things that needed to be addressed. So they will meet with us. It'll be Jack and Matt, myself, Paulette. Our architect engineers will all be at the table, meeting with the DOE and answering their questions around the conditions at Runlet. We expect that that will go very well. Unfortunately, it was postponed, and it was rescheduled to August, no, September 22nd, right? September, September 22nd. We did get a list of districts across the state. It is, that is public information. There was quite a few districts that applied for building aid money. I think one of our local representatives kind of shared that with us at one of the meetings. We did get the official list. A lot of them, though, are very small grants, you know, $10 million. I guess that's not small, depending on where you come from, right?
Well, in the size of the body.
In comparison, too, and unfortunately, the size of the allotment by the state at $15 million is just, it's difficult. So we'll see what happens. We're going to remain optimistic. A couple of just quick items, updates, preparations for the opening. I know that's hard to believe, but you know, our first day of school is just a month away. August 31st is the first day here in Concord for our students. We're preparing now, and Kim's here. She can update us also on new teacher orientation, the two days that we have for preparation for teachers before school starts, which is on the 29th and the 30th. A lot of people ask about bus routes, and so the bus routes are done. I met with Terry. But, you know, we don't post the bus routes anymore. I hope you, does everyone realize that? And we don't post them for safety reasons, identifying streets and, you know, where people live and all that. It's been a practice now for the last few years that the families actually get a letter with their time and their bus stop, so that everybody has a personalized information regarding their child's bus stop. So I guess I would say if anybody has any questions, or you get questions about bus stops, make sure that they send them over to our Bus Depot, and Terry will, Terry and his team will take care of that. So we're in that arena, in that place right now. Bob?
Just kind of a related question. Do you have a sense yet of expected enrollment and whether there's any significant changes in any?
You must have known, you must have known I was doing that all today, because we, it's not in your report. It looks like the enrollment, again, is remaining very steady. We're not losing students, which, you know, we've seen somewhat of a trend over the past few years of losing students, but that's not the case at all. I am watching several places, several classes. One that I've been watching very carefully, they're at 68 right now in grade one at Abbott Downing. That's a concern to me. There's only three classroom teachers there. That's a first grade. It does fulfill the, let me just grab my notes so I don't misspeak. It does fulfill and follows your guidelines for class size, but it's too close. And it appears that we have two pending. We're at 70. We could be at 70. I need to do that. I reviewed the superintendent's contingency account, which you all supported and put in the budget for this year. So there is money there if I need to add another teacher to that. I just talked to Anthony this morning, and we're going to watch those numbers a little bit, but not for much longer before we have to really be prepared to add a teacher. The other area, the only other place that I was a little concerned of, and it really was, Brenda, you generated this concern last year, was at Beaver Meadow, but we're, the third grade is high right now. But I don't know what other, what the other numbers would look like, so that is there a teacher that could move from one grade level to another? And unfortunately, the principal was not in today for me to finalize those numbers. I will have those. So those are the two hotspots, if you will, Bob, that I'm watching very carefully. I just got new numbers today right off of our Power School, so.
Kate?
I know that you were saying that it fits the guidelines, but I know that, I believe we have discussed before revisiting those guidelines because of a concern that they may be outdated, and I'm not sure if that has come to fruition as something that we've scheduled to discuss.
It's really a policy that the board has. I looked at the policy again today. It was done quite a while ago, and so I think it is time for the board to take a look at it and decide. We also have some other enrollment issues, one of them being youngsters who are born after October 1, which is your cutoff. And I'm not talking about months later. I'm talking about those youngsters that were born the first couple of weeks of October. We've been working on a process. How do we do that? Instead of, right now, we just say no. And I did not support the just say no. I thought we had a responsibility to look at each youngster and determine on a personal level how those youngsters would fare if they were in kindergarten. So we have that to look at. We also have to look at retention and a process for retention. How does that happen? We talked about that at our last, as a matter of fact, it's one of the policies that you'll look at in your August meeting, your August 1st meeting, no, August, no, that's tonight, your September meeting. No, you're going to look at those policies tonight. We did put them in tonight. That's right. We didn't put them off till September. So we're also looking at promotion and retention policies, so we have some work to do around that area. I don't know if that answers your question, Kate, but?
It does, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't know if Kim wanted to add anything, Kim, regarding opening for teachers and?
Well, this is hard, automatically on?
Yes, you're on.
Thank you. We do have those two days set aside. One and a half days will be really specific kind of professional development. All the new educators, professional educators will be getting their devices, so it'll be heavy emphasis on technology and, you know, how to use our site. We'll have a heavy emphasis on professional development and the My Learning Plan site and how to submit your ongoing credentialing information. So we have some guest visitors coming in to provide that information to all of the new teachers. And then there will be an opportunity for teachers to meet with the union that you have here to have a kind of an ice cream social, and then a three-hour session set aside for them to work with their particular mentor, who is, the mentor is matched up to a mentee. Every single new teacher is provided with a mentor. So that's sort of the agenda, and invitations have been sent out, and we're on a roll.
Great. Mr. Weinberg? Oh, sorry, then Ms. Hastings.
When we're talking about the numbers of students, I was wondering, how are we doing? Are all of the classroom positions filled?
I believe that in here, there's a report of the number of classroom teachers, positions that we still need to fill.
Oh, okay.
So I believe that I saw it in here, and if not, I've seen it somewhere today. So I'm happy to, is it in here? Okay.
That report will be, Michelle has it. She has an update.
Is it verbal report? What you saw was in our?
Okay. We reviewed that today at central office, so it was in the central office agenda.
It is on the agenda.
Yeah.
Michelle's going to update us.
Oh, okay.
Great. Go ahead, Ms. West. Or sorry, Mr. Weinberg, then Ms. West.
I was just going to ask for this ice cream social. I imagine in the past it hasn't been conventional for board members to attend, but would this also be an opportunity for board members?
It, I'll answer that.
Sure.
It's a union meeting.
Oh, it's a union.
I don't know if you're a card-carrying member, but it's for the union to, you know, and get people interested in enrolling and becoming members in the CEA.
That being said, we do have a welcome the first day, where we're just doing introductions, and I will send you out the agenda, and any one of you who are interested in attending, you're welcome to come and just be introduced.
Thank you.
The president of the board is always there to welcome everyone and have some remarks, too, but we'd like to have the board there if you have the time. It'd be great.
29th, I believe? Is it the 29th?
The new teacher orientation.
The 24th and 25th.
Yeah, yeah. We'll send you out that information.
Thank you. More than happy to kind of attend, or if another board member could.
I'll be in the last.
Speak as well. Ms. West?
I just had a quick request for clarification. You were talking about mentor, mentee, and that just reminded me of language that we had talked about previously, and so these are two different things, correct? Or no? Do you know what I'm alluding to, or am I being too big?
No. Can I answer that for Kate?
Absolutely.
That was language that was in the contract, right? For any teacher that is, we assign a mentor to when they come to us, but if a teacher is struggling, that we have to have notice that they are receiving a mentor. So as you recall in the contract that you approved, we will be looking at Section K of the contract, which is all around teacher renewal, teacher evaluation, and performance reviews. So that will be part of our deliberations this year.
Oh, okay. I think that the gap may be that it might be standard for new teachers to have a mentor. Yeah, that was the gap for me. So I, I understand now. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you for all that information. And I'd like to actually just say, you know, a thank you to, well, the administrators, and I know that Principal Reardon is here, so he can hear it directly, but the administrators and all the teachers that are involved in the freshman orientation, as well as the kindergarten boot camp, that means so very much to not only those students, but their families as well. And it's, I always get comments and people tell me how valuable that is. So I just wanted to express my thanks to those who are out there when they could be at the lake and doing all those things. So I appreciate it. Go ahead.
And I have also heard from many families of students that participated in the Title I reading camps over the summer and were shocked that their kids couldn't wait to go. So it was great. It was, you know, a lot of good things happening here.
Great, thank you.
Could I just add one thing about that?
Of course.
They did backpacks for all the kids, too, and they filled them with books through using Title I money, so that the kids went home with backpacks and reading materials and various math materials for the kids that attended the summer school. So it was kind of nice.
Great, thank you.
They don't think of it as summer school anymore, I don't think. They think of it as camp, and they like going. Keep that up.
It's camp. As long as we can keep that. It's camp. Go ahead.
In the two days before school starts, the teachers are working, is there time for them to set up their classrooms and everything as well, built into the schedule?
Right. That was built into the negotiations, if you recall. Do you remember that? In some of the language, that they be given two hours, two hours, I'm looking to Michelle, two hours on each day to be in their classrooms. And I support that. I think it's really important, not only to prepare their classrooms, you know, and bulletin boards, and, you know, just making it a really nice environment for kids, but it's time for them to be with their colleagues and to connect with their teammates, whether it's their grade-level team or their department. And so I'm, I think it's a really important time for them.
Very good. Next is leave of absence, or?
No.
No, we have a public comment. Sorry. There was, we have a period now of public comment for agenda items only. We just ask that anybody making a public comment conform to our policies and out of respect for others. Do we have anyone here who'd like to make a public comment this evening? Not seeing any. I will remind everyone that we have a second public comment period at the end of the meeting that will, that people can address any topic that they would like on. It does not have to be an agenda item. So with that, let's move on to personnel. And now leave of absence requests.
Just before, I would like to discuss one of them in non-public, so I don't know if we want to take them all into non-public at the end of the meeting? Or do them separately so that it's? I know, that's one.
I don't, I don't mind doing it. We're going into non-public at the end of the meeting. Would you care to, I don't know, do we want to go into it right now for a few minutes, or do we want to defer both of them till later?
Here's the issue with that. If you go into non-public to discuss a personnel matter and you have a decision to make, which is approve or not approve?
Yeah.
Which has to be done in public session, you need to make sure that we keep the, you know, the TV going. Usually, you know, at the end, when we have a non-public, we just come back and we just adjourn. So I just, I'm just cautioning you.
We already have an end-of-meeting, non-public session that could go for a little bit that I don't want to hold up on. Do we want to take five minutes or 10 minutes right now to go into non-public to discuss this matter? I would, Superintendent, I'm?
I think that's probably wise, so that you can make the decisions in public session and not?
Thank you.
So is the other? I'm sorry?
Would we expect to be going in the other room or staying here?
No, I think Jack just went to make sure that the other room would?
I believe we'll go into the other room. By the way, we?
If you want to go to the conference room, that's fine.
We'll go, we'll go into the other room, and we'll just, he'll put a public service message up on our.
Great.
So, but we will need a motion to go into non-public.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. West. Is there a second?
A second.
Pursuant to which?
We just need to know.
Hold on, I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg.
I'm on A, three, two.
C?
I don't think it's reputation.
No, well, it's personnel, right?
Personnel.
Hiring, please.
I'm thinking the hiring of, hiring of any person. Leave of absence would be part of the hiring process.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
91, A, three, Roman numeral two, B as in boy.
Is that okay with you, Ms. West?
Yes.
Very good. Very good.
I'm sorry. I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Cotton. Actually, several people who are going to second that. And we will need a roll call vote when you get a chance. No? Very good.
Sorry, I'm just trying to catch up on everything.
Not a problem.
Ms. Hastings. Ms. Walsh.
Yay.
Mr. Weinberg.
Aye.
Ms. West.
Aye.
Mr. Cotton.
Aye.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
And I say aye. So seven to zero, we are in non-public.
Okay. We're in non-public. We estimate it'll only be 15 minutes or less for the public who is watching. Thank you. Back. Is there a motion to come out of non-public?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walsh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Very good. At your leisure.
Ms. Hastings.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
Mr. Weinberg.
Aye.
Ms. West.
Aye.
Mr. Cotton.
Aye.
Mr. Richards.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Okay. We are out of non-public session. Do we have any motion for regarding the minutes?
I move to seal the minutes.
Moved by Ms. Walsh. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hastings. This does not have to be a roll call vote. So as soon as... Okay. As long as you're ready. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. Thank you, everyone. And I certainly appreciate the public's patience as we were doing our business. All right. With that, leave of absence requests. Ms. Garrett, you want to present that there are two?
Yes, we have two leave of absence requests for the 2022-2023 school year.
Do I have a motion with regards to the two?
I make a motion to approve the two leave of absence requests.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. Moved by Mr. Weinberg and seconded by Ms. West. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Garrett, the two leave of absence requests are approved.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a list of teacher confirmations for some new positions that are being filled this year. Did you want me to go over them individually?
Please.
Okay. We have for Concord High School, a special education teacher, Mr. John Billings. We have two math teachers at Runlet Middle School, Megan Fenton and Sabrina Freeze. We have a school psychologist at Runlet Middle School, Laura Grace. We have a school counselor at Runlet Middle School, her name is Shannon Tawney. A special education teacher for Runlet Middle School, Erin Thompson. A speech-language pathologist at Beaver Meadow, Rebecca Ellis. A second speech-language pathologist at Beaver Meadow, Abby Libby. A classroom teacher at Beaver Meadow, Evan Tanzer. And we have a classroom teacher at Krista McCullough, Stacy Perkins. And a classroom teacher at Millbrook School, Emma Cale.
Very good. And for the... If the public would like to look at any of the details with regards to these individuals, it's in the board book that is on our website. Do I have a motion to approve the recommended teachers?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hastings. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Walsh. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any hands. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Weinberg.
So the school psychologist position is the one that we were looking to fill from the one vacated for that classroom teacher position, correct? Laura Grace? That was the position we talked about previously, how a teacher was leaving that position to go to another?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion? Did we have a motion to approve them?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, I just want to make sure we were in the process. All right. In that case, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you.
There is also fall coaches. It's not on the agenda, but they are in the packet.
And these aren't new coaches. This is just a slate of coaches for the fall.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Garrett with regards to coaches? Yes, Mr. Weinberg.
I just had a question. So I noticed for football, the... Each of the coaches who are all assistants and for JV are given the same amount, which is significantly higher than others. Is that just kind of the time that goes in to prepping for those sports versus the other ones?
I believe it's the time commitment for... I mean, for football versus a different sport, it is the time commitment. And there's a formula that goes into it that's defined in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Any other questions?
I'm just curious. What is an athletic facilitator at Runlet? RMS Athletic Facilitator?
I am not sure. I would have to defer to...
They have. It's like an athletic director. It's not like Steve is full-time, year-round. Scott is not year-round, but he facilitates all the team sports, the events, the referees, all that. Schedules for everything for Runlet Middle School.
Other questions? Go ahead.
I know that there had been parents who were interested in trying to start a lacrosse program at Runlet. Have there been discussions with them? They reached out to Paulette, you know, late spring. I'm not sure what...
I know that, but I don't know where we're at with that. I haven't talked to Steve Mello regarding that, but I will. I'll follow up on it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Garrett, are we looking for approval for this slate?
Yes, please.
May I have a... Is there a motion to approve the slate of coaches for the fall?
Should we move to add it to the agenda or do we not have to do that? I don't know. I'm just trying to learn.
Yeah. Nope. That's... Yeah. I agree. I think that procedurally, before we consider it, we would have to make a motion to add it to the agenda and have the board agree.
So I'll make a motion that we add the confirmation of the fall coaches to the agenda.
Seconded by Mr. Weinberg. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. West, for the procedural item, because I think that was important. So now...
I'll make a motion to confirm the coaches.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. West. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you all.
Vacancy update?
Please.
So with the two leave of absence requests that were just approved, we are looking in the process of filling seven certified positions at this time. We have filled the majority of our certified teaching staff positions. There are a few that are in transition right now. So there's a candidate that we're scheduling to meet with Kathleen this week, hopefully. So for certified positions, we're looking really good. We do have, for support staff, we... The biggest position that we're struggling to fill would be the special education aides, instructional aides. We do have 34 vacancies right now on that, which sounds like a large number, but in comparison to other districts that we just recently surveyed, we're average or below average for what the amount of positions that they're looking for to fill.
Thirty-four out of how many?
I don't have that number offhand.
About 160-something.
Yeah.
For certified positions, can you just clarify what that means? What?
A teacher. So we're looking for a music teacher. We're looking for two kindergarten teachers. We're still looking for a psychologist, a math teacher, a language arts teacher. So a certified position.
I apologize. I also know that you said that the special ed instructional aides were a majority of the support staff, but are there other positions that make up that group as well?
Correct. So the largest number of support staff that have vacancies right now are the support aides, the special education aides. We have 19 tutor vacancies. We have four permanent subs, five program assistants, five administrative assistants, some food service, custodians, bus drivers, monitors, and crossing guards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Garrett, the two kindergarten teachers, do we have applicants in the queue?
Well, the kindergarten LOA was pending, so there are positions... There are applicants, but I'm sure as soon as I change that posting from anticipated to a vacancy, it'll drive in. And I believe that there are already some kindergarten applicants being interviewed for the other vacancy.
Very good. And superintendent, do we have a plan for the boot camp for those classes and for either administrators or someone to be covering those classes so that the kindergarteners have someone they meet when they come in and program?
You mean in terms of their teachers?
Well, if we have two openings for teachers, that means there's two classes that are going to come in in a week or so, and they're not going to have... You're not going to hire anybody on that by that time.
No, good point. The principal and the assistant are there. And it's again, you know, remember, in a kindergarten class, you have a lot of other support staff too. You have the speech and language. That's why you have a number of speech and language just for the early learners. So we have some folks that will be there. But I did talk to one principal. They have an interview tomorrow for the kindergarten position. So I think we're... We'll... We may be close if we don't have them all filled, but we'll do the best we can.
I just want to reassure parents who I'm sure are very interested in listening. Yes.
To clarify, the boot camp isn't all kindergarteners. Is it, it's invited kindergarteners?
Yeah. And they come in small groups.
But is it only for children that have been assessed and...
They'll be assessed.
They're all kindergartners.
They're all kindergartners, yeah.
This is... When did you start that?
We're starting this week and next week.
How many years?
I'll give you an example. I talked to Chris Gallo today. She's have... She has kids coming in Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then next week, she has youngsters coming in too. So they come in in small groups.
Yeah. No, I'm just wondering when we started doing that.
Several years?
Yeah. It's been going on for quite a while. They love it.
Five years.
They love it.
Not five years.
Not five years? Four years.
I don't know when they started.
I know a fourth... Someone going into fourth grade that attended it, so that's...
No, it didn't. Yeah. And we didn't... Yeah, no, it was by invitation. That's why I was curious, just...
No. Very good. And then one more thing, and then I'll actually go ahead and Ms. Hastings, and I'll cover.
Just a clarification. So the seven certified positions you're looking for do include the two that we just approved.
Leave of absences.
Yep. There's a few others, but there's already candidates that just haven't interviewed with the superintendent yet.
Okay.
So it's really five?
No. The seven is the certified, but there are others that are just in process right now.
They might have people in mind.
And finally, the 34 vacancies for aides. If someone is listening out there and would like to or apply or recommend someone to apply, how would they go about doing that?
They can visit our website at www.sau8.org. Right on the main screen, there's a link to the employment opportunities. Just click on the blue box and it's right there.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring that up in case people are listening. Go ahead, Ms. West.
Before we move on, I just wanted to ask quickly if there was an update on the search for the DEI officer?
Yes. I actually have a meeting scheduled with the new DEIJ coordinator in Oyster River. I also have a... And joining us will be Andres, who is the DEIJ in Exeter. And they are both willing to help and support our effort to secure a DEIJ. We have been reaching out into our own community and had have... I've had some discussions with folks from Concord, which would be ideal to encourage some people to apply. So we're still working on it, Kate. We haven't... I don't have a new group to interview yet, but we're doing the groundwork we can to find some folks that would meet our needs in Concord.
Other question? And I'm just clarifying that.
Just one other point. I did talk to the superintendent today in Bo, Mr. Cass... Dr. Cascaden, and indicated to him, you know, because we were working with them, and indicated to him today our dilemma, but what we were doing. And he was very supportive. So one way or another, I'm not sure it's ever going to work out with Bo and Concord. We'll have to see how it plays out. But they are supportive of us looking to find the right candidate, so.
One last question, if that's all right. I apologize.
Certainly.
I did understand from your email that the reason we're still looking for a candidate is because you wanted to ensure that that candidate understood that we're focusing on cultivating anti-racist culture and set of policies in our schools and that that was a priority. And so I just wanted the confirmation that that is the purpose of that position and and that role, and then to highlight and ask if that is communicated in every interview we have for every position in the district. Because if that's a qualifying factor for that role itself, I think it should also be one communicated to every person applying to work in the district.
Well, you know what I wrote in your email, and it's accurate. So I think that answers the question. Since the very first time I came to Concord to serve the people of Concord, the focus had been on addressing the needs of the various diversity and cultures in the community, the wonderful cultures and diversity in this community, and to acknowledge that and to work with them and to support our students. And so I have been adamant about that since the beginning and want to find the right fit for Concord. I mean, it isn't just about what happens in some other place. It's about what we need here. And I think we've all, at least I felt since I came, that that was the priority. So you were right. You're accurate.
So I appreciate that. I agree, and I want to make sure it's communicated to.
I will be adamant until I find the right person that will fit that role. And it's not an easy role to fit, as you know. I mean, there is a lot of controversy around it. There was controversy in Oyster River. There was controversy in Exeter. In this controversy in Manchester, all the districts that have employed DEIJ coordinators, directors, whatever title they held. And so I want to make sure that we have the right person here. In terms of interviews, every interview for certified staff, as Michelle just alluded to, are coming through my office. Kim did some for me while I was on vacation, and John has done some for some interviews while I was away. And equity is a very important issue, and we ask all of our candidates. And frankly, Kate, some have more experience than others. We have to remember, we're in New Hampshire, which is very homogeneous in terms of our demographics, right? But we ask them about equity and their experiences and their knowledge. But we also know that we have a commitment to training. And we are starting our third cohort this year, and that there's a cohort in every school. So every school is on their third group of teachers, all getting that training from New Hampshire listeners. And we are committed to doing that. And so some come better prepared to face those issues than others. But that's kind of where we stand right now.
Thank you.
And Superintendent, this DEIJ coordinator or officer position, when hired, there's no delay. They would come in and start as soon as we hired them, correct?
Right. I would absolutely. You would be the first to be involved in that, because it would require my recommendation and your election to that position.
But it's not a wait until next year, wait until next semester, or any of that?
No, not at all.
That would be immediate.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, Superintendent, from the administration?
No, I think that's it. Me.
Okay.
For the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Karen, and thank you, Superintendent, for that. Next item on the agenda is the Communications and Policy Committee, and I will yield to Ms. Cannon.
Yay. So Communications and Policy, I hope everyone will remember, we went through a first reading chunk at our last school board meeting. I hope everyone's had a chance to look at the policies. I ask people if they have concerns, or revisions, or edits, to please reach out to me. I have not heard anybody reaching out for any of the policies. So does anyone have any discussion that they'd like to have on these eight policies before we move through, hopefully approving them as required policies on basically how you can get credits and graduate and...
But Ms. Cannon will be approving each policy?
Yeah, we'll be doing each one individually, absolutely.
Go ahead.
I have a, and it's more of a question of how things work in the schools, not necessarily a question about the policy specifically, but on the home schooling policy and the participation in co-curricular activities, there's a provision that about, in order to participate, they have to meet academic standards. And I'm just, and I'm trying to find it. And I'm just wondering how that is assessed, and who assesses it, and what standards do we have at Runlet and Concord High School for participating in co-curricular activities and athletics?
Could I ask Mr. Reedon to answer that for you?
I was hoping you would.
Can we have a page?
Yeah, actually, Pam, if you look at page, I mean, feel free to come forward, Mike. Page twenty-four, there's an entire section about evaluation and assessment.
Yes, and that's for like, and I'm just curious about, because there's another provision that I'm trying to find on an evaluation to participate in sports.
Participation in school curricular and co-curricular activities?
Oh, you mean the appendix?
Yeah, I don't have the appendix, but it suggests that there are standards and an assessment, too.
Mr. Reedon, will you please?
The question was about co-curricular eligibility?
Yes.
For, I guess for, anyway.
For everyone, and then how do we assess that for homeschool students?
Well, for regular high school kids, they have to be passing four of their classes. It's assessed by the, Steve Mello, the director of athletics. Often when kids are short on those four passing courses, we give them an opportunity to make those up. They cannot play until that's done. But homeschool kids, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I'm really not sure. You know, the part of it, Pam, is that the assessment of the work that homeschool kids do is not obviously in our hands. It's in the hands of their families who essentially give the kids credit or not for the work that they've done. So...
I know that what we are allowed to require for homeschool students is very limited under New Hampshire law, but I do think that there should be some equity in if we have standards for in-school students to participate in activities, that we should try and find a way for the same standards to apply to other students.
Yeah, well, obviously, my answer is yes. I'm just not sure how to enforce that equity.
Page twenty-five, as parent lists on the top, the full paragraph on page twenty-five, is parents need only provide the evaluation results slash portfolio to the district to the extent necessary to demonstrate proficiency in order to participate in school programs and extracurricular activities, as provided under RSA 193-A63 and Ed Rule 315.07B. So I assume that if challenged, that they would have to provide the evaluation results. There are numerous ways that they can evaluate them. Am I correct?
That's correct. They could, they can hire a certified teacher to be able to administer that. They can use standardized testing, you know, IO, basic reading test, that kind of thing. And then I think the key really for probably many homeschoolers will be the portfolio.
And I guess my question is, are we enforcing those standards?
Have we checked portfolios?
Are we checking, are we checking portfolios for students who want to participate in co-curricular activities?
I'd have to ask Chance to talk with Steve Mello about that.
Can you get us an answer on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reedon. Appreciate your input. Superintendent, just note that we'll be looking for that.
I did make a note.
As I move forward. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Hastings.
I have a question on policy six seventy-one on page twenty-eight, where we talk about high school graduation requirements. We had talked about the number of credits required to graduate from Concord High at twenty, to raising those. And where are we on that?
Mr. Reedon, please come back down.
Maybe you just want to hang in there for a while.
Thank you very much.
So this is a very interesting question to me. Kathleen and I have been talking about it as part of the strategic planning going forward. I don't know officially, but I suspect that Concord High School's twenty credits are very likely the lowest in the state. I don't know what the history behind that is. So when Kathleen and I talked about this, the number twenty-four came up, based on anything other than something that was incremental and that made sense as a balance between where we are now and where we'd be going in the future. We talked about the need for that being implemented with an incoming freshman class, for example, so we're not changing the credits in the middle of the stream for upperclassmen. So with all said, with that said, I just want to add one other part of that. I mean, I assume that we're going to be discussing that Kathleen and our... So one other thing I want to say about that is I think it would behoove us to ask Tom Crumraine to give us an historical readout of, say, the last five years of the average number of credits for Concord High School graduates. I suspect I have, I have no data in front of me. I suspect that would probably be somewhere around twenty-three credits. And what I'm thinking about is that most of our kids probably do have graduated with twenty-three, twenty-four, or even in cases of our outstanding students, quite a bit more than that. I'm thinking about the kids who struggle to get to twenty. And I think we need to think through carefully about the effect of raising it to twenty-four or whatever figure we talk about upon them. Students who do school, who fortunately are most of our kids, are not, twenty, twenty is not something they're aiming at. That's not even an issue for them. They're going above and beyond that. I'm concerned, again, about at least our thinking and moving carefully, and I know I haven't even discussed this with you, Kathleen, about the kids who struggle to make the twenty right now, and how that's going to affect them going forward. For a lot of those kids, and I don't want to generalize, but I guess that's what I'm about to do, for a lot of those kids, what they need to do is to get a high school diploma and get on with their life, because school is not their thing. And, you know, that's going to be addressed for them by looking, by doing more and more work with pathways at the high school of identifying different ways of engaging them intellectually, academically, and professionally in their high school years. But I guess what I'm saying is I'm more concerned with losing kids on the way, perhaps, potentially, than just raising credits. I just want to put that in front of the board.
Yeah, I understand that. My concern, I think, with twenty, if we have students who are struggling to get to that twenty, are we preparing them to be able to go out and be successful in the work? You know, I'm hopeful that pathways will help with that and that they will get some of the skills needed. But I don't know that just saying, okay, well, we know school wasn't your thing, so you go figure it out now. I want to make sure that we're giving all of our students what they need to be successful, whatever their future path.
And Brenda, I would emphasize, school is not your thing. School as traditionally defined is not your thing. And as schools, as our schools, and particularly Concord High School, is evolving in our ability to meet the needs of all of our kids with different types of experiences that prepares them for after school.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cannon.
So I want to comment a couple of things. That's part of the reason for all of these different policies going in as a package, for the kids that school is not their thing. There are other ways to earn credits. That's the whole point of looking at this as a package, the various ways that you can actually get credit to count towards graduation. But the other piece is that this particular policy, the twenty credits, that conversation's been going on for a while. The point of having to do this policy, which is required by law and really needs to be in effect before school starts, has to do with the passage of the civics exam and the FAFSA that were required by the state legislature for us before anyone could graduate. And that, we have to approve this before the school year starts, so that that's in effect when, because it's state law now, you have to do that.
Right, I understand.
So I guess my concern is, I don't want to get bogged down in the twenty-credits conversation right now. That's not a change from where it was before, and that's an ongoing conversation. But I'm concerned that we have, we pass this because we have to, to comply with state law.
I understand. It just happens that we pass these to get it through, but then it doesn't come back up until next year when we have to pass it again, because something else has changed.
Yep.
And we never actually address that.
So first, Mr. Weinberg, then Ms. West, then Ms. Walsh.
Just to talk about it a little more. So in order to graduate with twenty credits, you need to take minimally five credits each year, in which you can maximally take like eight credits, which if you were to take five credits, that means you would have about three study halls year long, correct?
Correct.
And if you were to take six credits, then you still have two study halls or opens for the entire school year. So just kind of to put it tangibly, so you can imagine what that might look like if you were only taking five credits each year, or if you were taking six credits, which then, if you were still to take six credits each year, you would finish with twenty-four credits, and you would still have two study halls within each school year.
Assuming you passed the course.
No, of course, of course. But just providing like some tangible understanding of what that looks like in the day of the day of the student.
In context.
In context.
Ms. West?
I just wanted to say, too, that when I heard Mr. Reedon, or Principal Reedon, I apologize, say, "School is just not for them." That is a really jarring thing to hear. Like, this really makes you go, what? But then it made me realize, right, that the response to that from you and the community and this policy is to say, you know, wait, 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 we can make school more for you, and this is how. And that's why these policies are written, is to say, we can help make this better. We can work with you to make it more for you, to help you succeed. So I like that, and I wanted to say it out loud. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh.
I was just going to suggest that maybe we ask for a presentation discussion to the instructional committee by a date certain, so that we know that this discussion that I think we're all very interested in doesn't just get lost.
So that sounds like a motion.
Is it a motion? Okay, I will make it a motion, that the administration report to the instructional committee by November? I'm looking at Mrs. Murphy. Is that reasonable, December, on proposals around changing credit hour requirements?
So I was going to say, you can make the motion, and then I will ask for the administration input, so you can...
So then I will say November, the administration report to the instructional committee by November around potential change.
Will it be until December?
The instructional, the administration report to the instructional committee by its December meeting on potential changes around credit hour requirements for graduation.
Is there a second to that?
Can I just catch up?
Yes, sure. Of course, again, I'm sorry.
So on potential credit?
Changes for graduation. Changes to credit requirements for graduation.
I would just add that it's our responsibility to, as Kate was just suggesting, to make sure that every student under our charge is successful. This, I don't think the key point, it's an important point, but the key point is the number of credits. The key point is how are we preparing each student individually with his or her unique needs to be successful beyond a transitional experience, which is high school. A high school is not an end in itself. It's a preparation for what comes after it. And that's really what's important.
I'll second. Second, okay. Seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Do you have anything response with regards to that as we discuss this, please?
My only comment is, is that this will give us time to do a preparation, meet with instructional, and should we have a recommendation that you, as a board, will see, this will impact budget. Because if, let's say, for instance, that you agree that we need to increase the number of credits, and we start with a freshman class, right? You're going to start out slowly. You're not going to try to just implement it to everybody. You don't tell a senior they need four more credits, you know. So you're going to need to address it via the budget, too. It is going to have implication there, just so you know.
It is my understanding that we would like a report. We don't necessarily require a final decision or final report.
That's correct.
We just want to make sure that we are progressing, as I understand it, in the evaluation of this topic, since it has come up previously in one that the board, at least as I read it now, feels is important.
Can I add just one last thing?
You most certainly may, Mr. Reedon.
To go back to Jonathan's thing, regardless of the number of credits, we still get those kids in study halls. So, you know, that's another thing to think about. You know, we have hundreds of art requests that go unfulfilled every year because of the number of our teachers we have. So, you know, again, the number of credits, I think, is important, but it's peripheral to what we're really trying to do.
And at this point, we don't need a comment, but if Ms. Anderson would like to talk about number of credits, we do appreciate your input, but I'm not asking you to say something if you don't want to.
Of course. I know that personally, I do love school. It is my thing. And I'm probably going to graduate with, I don't know, maybe four to six more credits than needed. I think that, and I know when I have study halls, if, or friends of mine that don't get into their classes, we don't really have much to do during our study halls. We just kind of sit there if we don't have other work. And I feel like that if we could be put in another class, it would be more effective use of our time, just personally.
Well, well put, Ms. Anderson. Thank you.
Can I just follow up? When you request a class and you don't get it, do you request like a backup class, or?
I believe, I don't think you can request a backup class. I think you have to go talk to your guidance counselor. I don't believe they will just stick you in a random class, but you would probably just get put in a study hall. And then if there was another class open, maybe your guidance counselor would talk to you about that.
I mean, that's, I think we have a range of offerings. Everyone who looks at the Concord High course offerings that I've talked to is amazed at the... the wide variety. And as we look at credits, I think, I think three study halls for kids is a lot, and when we could be working to find something that would engage them, and if they're not getting into their first choice classes, I think we tried to address that this year, but also we should be thinking about how, if you don't get your first choice, you can give a sec, you can have a second or a third choice if they're going in.
Students can request backup classes.
Okay.
And I know, I know that the guidance department makes every effort to get kids out of study halls and into credit-bearing classes, but, you know, it's, it's, it's really the electives like art, music to a lesser extent, some of the stuff, the engineering program that kids flock to, to fill out their classes, or in some cases, that's the primary thing that they're looking for. But we don't have enough to meet what all of the kids are requesting.
Go ahead, Ms. West, and then Ms. Hastings.
I just, I just wanted to point out, too, because I know study hall does sound like this period of time that, that could potentially be filled with something useful, and I understand that, and it does sound like there's a process for requesting to participate in a course, but I want it to be understood as well, personally, for me, when I was in high school, I, I worked. I did do extracurriculars and athletics and things like that, and I had a sibling that I had to babysit. And so in order to be in courses like honors biology, to handle that course load, I had to have study halls as well, to do homework then, because then I had shifts and things to go to. So just thinking about the different dynamic, you know, dynamic lives of the students and understanding that it's not, that when you have three study halls, you're just, and you didn't get the class, you might just, yeah, sit around or whatever, so.
It can, a study hall for kids can be useful, but not the number of kids we have in study halls now.
Hastings.
And again, I know we're off the, so we'll get right back to it, but when you bring some information to instructional committee, it'd be great if you could include the classes that are really popular, and what we're doing to address, how could we get more students into those?
Yep.
Do we need more staff in those areas? What do we need?
If, if you recall, we actually did that.
We did last year.
And the budget. We looked at what classes, we looked at the fact that we, we actually brought somebody in to do, what was it, life skills or finance, or there was a, there was a person we brought in, because there were lots of people who couldn't get into that class.
And how many students are still having three study halls? If we, if we had a number by December, just let us.
I don't, I don't want to speculate.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm saying for, for December.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Cotton.
Just one other comment slash question, maybe, for Kathleen and Michael. You mentioned, I think, that this is also part of the topic of the strategic plan, and my recollection is, is that there was some discussion around this with respect to the strategic plan. So in addition to being able to discuss it in December, I think, you know, to the extent when you guys meet on this, if we could build into this, to the strategic plan, how we're going to do that over the next five years, or three years, that'd be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Any other questions?
No.
No, we haven't yet. But thank you for that very enlightening and very, you know, spirited discussion. Critical, it's a critical topic, I appreciate it. Other questions or comments with regards to the policies that they're presenting? We already covered that?
No, 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 we can't go there either.
No, yeah, we're still.
We have on the table a motion.
Motion for the first.
From the administration to make a presentation.
Ah, thank you, yes.
To the instructional committee by the December 2022 meeting on the potential changes to credit requirements for graduation.
Thank you. I was jumping, jumping down again.
Seconded by Jonathan.
All right, no further discussion? In that case, then, let's vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Sorry, Superintendent, we just added to your workload, but important item. And, sorry, Ms. Yarly, you're going to get it out of, you're going to get it out of your workload. But it's important, thank you. All right, now, Ms. Cannon, move on.
Okay, do we have any more questions, comments on the eight different policies? I know that's a lot, and I hope people have taken a look at it. This is now the, the second reading, so we've kind of been percolating for, for a month. Are there, are there any other comments or questions that people have?
Are we allowed to approve them as a slate?
No.
No, we need to approve them individually.
No, we have to do it individually. I mean, I'm trying not to really make this a long meeting, but, and eight policies are a lot, but no, we have to approve them individually.
But thank you for that time-saving question.
Okay.
So just let me know when you're ready.
Yep, I'm just gonna, so, as the chair of the policy committee, do you want me to make the motions, and then?
Doesn't matter. If you're, when you said you were ready, I was going to make the motion on policy number 620.
Go for it.
Okay, in that case, I'd like to make a motion that we approve policy number 620, home education. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Weinberg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
I move that we approve the revisions to policy number 670, promotion and retention of students.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cotton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
I make a motion that we approve policy number 671 with regard to high school graduation requirement.
Second.
I am.
Moved by Ms. Hastings, seconded by, by Ms. Walsh. Any discussion further? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
I make a motion that we approve policy 674, alternative credit options.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. West, seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
I'll make a motion that we approve policy number 675, high school graduation competencies.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 676, alternative learning plans.
And is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, made by Mr. Weinberg and seconded by Mr. Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
I'll move that we approve policy 677, distance education.
Second.
Made, moved by Ms. Walsh and seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Got that? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
I move that we approve policy number 678, assessment of educational programs. Second.
Moved by Ms. Hastings and seconded by Ms. West. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes.
Well done.
Thank you.
You are all very.
I'm sorry I couldn't do that, I was busy writing.
And thank you to the communications and policy committee.
Yes, that was a lot.
Thanks, and thank you very much. What else do you, what else do you have?
Oh, no, I got it, I'm all good, but I couldn't, I couldn't participate because I was so busy writing.
What else do you have for us, Ms. Cannon?
Um, I think that's basically it. We did have a policy committee meeting where we went through this, we, we looked at some other policies. We're going to be looking at doing first readings next meeting. We didn't want to add any more to the eight that we already had on the board.
We didn't want to allow them to bring more.
And one of the things that's still floating around in the background on that is the finance disclosure statements for, for people running. So that is still on the docket of the policy committee, so.
Thank you very much.
That's it, we're now done.
Nothing else for Ms. Cannon? Let's move on to item number eight, other business. Superintendent, do you want to lead this one?
Well, I, I, I think we all agreed to put it on the executive committee, since there has been a lot of discussion on athletic facilities, athletic fields. I asked Steve Melo, our athletic director, to help me with that, and he reached out to some families, parents that have been very involved in the programs at Concord High School, and many of them are part of the boosters that support each of the teams, and they're most willing to participate. We also have a recommendation to have a member of the city council, and I think, Mr. President, you have to decide on a board member to sit on this committee also. And we have a coach, Jim Corcoran, has agreed to do that as the football coach, so we'll have some coaches and parents and board members. I think it would behoove us to look at it. I think it's a process, I think it's part of the strategic plan, just to repeat what Bob said, there are many items in the strategic plan, but it would be good to have discussions with this committee.
Okay, so we're looking for one board member?
Can I nominate Barb even though she's not here?
I, um.
I'd be happy as the city community relation to do that as well.
With, with regards to Ms. Higgins, I know she has a program that utilizes city and field. I believe that would be a conflict of interest, and so I don't want to put her in that position.
I just think, I find it track.
I know she would gladly, I know she would gladly do it, and I know she'd be eager and anxious to do it, but I think.
That makes sense.
Because she has a business that, that utilizes it, that she won't, she probably won't be able to, based on our, our conflict of interest positions here in the board. But.
I think of Jonathan's.
Yeah, I support that, I apologize, or Jonathan.
All right, so, Mr. Weinberg, are you interested in this position?
As long as I get to have that mantle, of course. No, no, I'll happily do it, yes.
Does.
Is there anyone else, are there any other constituents that you would like to see on the committee? We have parents, city rep, our school reps.
We have parents that are involved in athletics, and so I, as you were going through the list, I was just thinking of, this is a cost to the community, so any community members that would like to participate, to represent the community, I think you should be open to them if they should approach, or businesses, I'm not sure. I'm just looking for our other constituents in the area.
And student athletes, right?
And student.
There'll be a student on it.
Student on there as well. Just a observation, I'm not dictating that or requiring that. Ms. Walsh, you have a.
I guess my one question is, it's a pretty broad committee that you're talking about, and I think that input of all those folks are good, but in the end, it sort of comes down to the financial arrangement between the city and the school board, and I'm wondering if that type of committee is really productive, is really going to accomplish anything along that goal. So I can see that committee meeting and saying, we need to deal with Memorial Field, we need better facilities for field hockey, but I feel like we all know that already, and it's a question of who pays for it, and I feel like those are more negotiations between the city and the school board, and not a public, unless we're expecting that there's a fundraising component of this, too, and even then, I think that's.
I think it's somebody from finance, probably.
Well, well, I was.
I'm just thinking, what is the committee, what are we hoping the committee is going to accomplish?
And that's a great point, because I think I see, you know, if you're looking at your advisory committee to just get input to the school district, then your committee is fine, and in which case, you know, that would be, I think, with the city and school district committee to address how we do this together jointly, and for the sake of people who just think of Memorial Field, we also do a lot in our school gymnasiums. We, we cooperate on several different levels. They share, they've worked with us with parks, and even far, even beyond Memorial. And so at that point, it becomes a, I think, an exclusive, that committee is an exclusively city and school board committee to negotiate a strategic direction that we're going and how we would pay for it, and I would agree with that, but I'm open to other suggestions. Mr. Cotton.
I personally agree with Pam. I think, you know, we need to have both Jack from the, from the finance side very involved, and Matt from the facilities side very involved, and probably some representation on those committees to be prepared to make a recommendation to the board as to how that may impact our budget going forward. And, yeah, there's going to be a serious negotiation with the city, I think.
Go ahead, Ms. Cannon. Thank you, Mr. Cotton.
I just think some thought needs to go into providing some very, very clear parameters of what the committee is supposed to try and accomplish. If they're trying to accomplish a, how do we fix all of our infrastructure and who pays for it, that's, that's a very different committee than how do we, so, my sense is, some of the impasse is that there's a lot of difficulty having this discussion with the city, just difficulty sitting down and having the discussion about who uses what, and who benefits, and who doesn't, and who pays and who doesn't. If the point is to make those communications easier, then that's a very different purpose for the committee than figuring out who's going to pay for it. So I'm just saying, I think we should have sort of clear parameters as to what the committee is supposed to try and accomplish.
No, all good discussions. I guess the question that comes to mind after listening to everyone and the input is, with regards to input on what we should be focusing on, I don't know if we need a subcommittee as you described it, or if we need a public hearing, because both could serve the purpose to give us information, and I'm not sure which one is more appropriate. And then with regards to the extent that we cooperate and partner, or the extent that we do things individually as the city and all, that would be the committee that I think both you and Ms. Walsh and Mr. Cotton are talking about, and then whether or not, how broad they address that, to your point, is something we need to give direction to that subcommittee on. That's how I interpret it, but, you know, I'm interested in other people's thoughts, especially with regards to, do we need to have a committee of athletes and parents and, or is that just a public hearing?
I don't think it's an either/or. I think we can have a hearing on this topic, while at the same time forming a committee with intention, as Pam said.
I just, yeah, I just think we need to clarify what the point of the committee, what are they, what are they charged with committing about?
I, I mean, quite frankly, I think a public hearing would be a great idea. I almost would like to invite the city council to hold it with us, because it is more than our facilities, you know? It is, they use our facilities, the Little League uses our facilities, we use Memorial Field and their facility, but I, I think starting with a public hearing and maybe setting up an advisor committee, what do we need to start, start with the question of what we're trying to accomplish? I think we've, and then, but I don't know the committee with the city council, it sort of makes sense to me.
Well, Jack brought to my attention that we have a, I had, I had forgotten about it, Jack, we have a document that lays out the relationship between the cities and the schools relative to facilities, athletic facilities and use of facilities. I think we need to review that. I don't think anybody on this board has seen it, so I'm, I think it was a great suggestion that we do capital facilities, take a look in finance, and take a look at that document to at least begin to understand the relationship we currently have with the city before we go move to the next point. I like the idea of a public hearing, always do, give everyone a chance to speak, not just selected people, but I do think that there has to be serious negotiations. Is it difficult? Will it be difficult? It absolutely will be because of the traditions, long history you've had, but I think you have to start somewhere, and I think there's a lot of folks out there that expect you to do that. I think the mayor is open to it. I do. I, just from some of the conversation we had, hope if he's listening tonight, I'm not wrong, but I do think those conversations have to start, and perhaps in a small, small group of just not the, you know, not a big, large group. I think you're talking about some significant negotiations.
I was going to make a motion that we refer it as the committee, but I'm. I was going to make a motion that we refer it as the committee, but I'm somewhat torn about. I was thinking about referring it to the City and Community Relations Committee as opposed to capital facilities or finance. But I'm open to, you know, I can make that motion.
Review is a good idea. Let's review what we've got.
And that's why I was, so which committee would be appropriate to refer this to, or best, Mr. Cotton?
I personally think the Facilities Committee ought to take the first shot at it.
Or a joint facility, City and Community Relations.
Or triple with finance.
At that point, we're getting, we're getting a board meeting. So, uh, so should we refer this to the capo? I would make a motion that we refer this to Capital Facilities Committee for further, a little more in-depth study and then a recommendation as to how we move forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Does this include, I did not know until I read an article in the Concord Monitor that there is a seat open on, like, the parks and recreation for a member of the school board. Is that separate and distinct from this issue? Is it the same? Is it?
I would consider it separate and distinct, but I did read that as well, and I would agree that that is not a seat that I have ever remembered being filled.
According to what I understand, it's never been filled by a school board member. And I think the position was is that it needs to be filled by a school board member, so there's a voice.
Okay, so that's a separate topic, but.
It is a separate, I actually had that on a list of things to discuss.
Sorry, I jumped the gun.
No, that's okay. Further, further discussion with regards to the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? And I certainly think that the Capital Facilities Committee will bring in City and Community Relations or Finance as needed. Okay? Well, that was good. What else do you have for us, Superintendent?
How would you like to look at calendars? How would you like to do that? If you look at August calendar, I hope I captured everything for the month. Speaking of the capital facilities, we're not sure about Wednesday night's meeting. I'm still reaching out to the chair to see whether we need to meet, but now that we've just brought up this topic, but I don't feel prepared to do that for Wednesday, so I would ask that we not do that.
We have to make a decision on capital facilities by tomorrow morning, correct?
Right, because it, you know.
Could we flip capital facilities and finance and instructional for the fifteenth of the third?
No.
There's a lot on that agenda that Jack needs to prepare for.
There's a lot on that. So if we did anything, it would be just to postpone that capital facilities meeting. But I will check in. I'm still waiting to hear back from the chair. Like I said in my early remarks, we don't have an update on the application, the process, all of that. So we're still in negotiations with the, you know, the church around that land, that piece of land on Clinton Street. And so it, it just didn't seem like we had the topics that Mrs. Higgins was looking for, so.
Do we know when their vote is?
I believe it's going to be in September. Jack, is the vote by the, the church members in September?
That's what we're told.
Yeah, that's what we've been told.
Wasn't it August?
Yeah.
End of August, mid-September. So I'm going with the latter.
Yeah.
This process has been.
So I guess where we're at is the Capital Facilities Committee meeting is still on. However, if you're on that committee, or was the thing, or you were thinking about attending, stay tuned to tomorrow.
I'll get a note out, yep.
Tomorrow, that will be on our website.
Right, it'll be on our website, and then I'll get a personal email out to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
The following week, you have a non-public session for the purpose of the superintendent's evaluation on Monday at 5:30.
And I would remind everyone that if they have some input to, please forward it to Ms. Cannon.
I'll try and compile it.
Thank you.
The rest of the week, as you know, we will, the Administrative Council will be on retreat. That's about thirty folks. That includes our principals, assistant principals, our directors. Big piece of that will be a work on the strategic plan, actually. So we'll be broadening that out and bringing forward to you recommendations around that plan for the three to five-year look at the school district. That will take up a great deal of time, but we have other topics on the agenda. We'll be looking at the collective bargaining agreements that have been negotiated this year, making sure that all of our staff, directors, principals, administrators, managers all understand the impact of those con, those contracts and the new language that's in there. We'll be looking at some data. We're looking at staff attendance data, student attendance data as it relates to instruction. We have a workshop session also. We're bringing in a guest speaker to talk about schools and how we work together as a team. So it'll be some team building. How we can have schools that have their own identification, but yet are all part of our team. And that when we look at things, we look at curriculum, it's a K-12 curriculum. If it's a program and we're looking at assessments, we're looking at K-12 assessments, so that we're working as one, as a team. So it's a pretty robust agenda, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to accomplish a lot.
Is it valuable to be pre-K to 12?
Absolutely, absolutely. The following week, you have a finance, and we had instructional meeting, but there's some discussion about whether that really should be the facilities, because we have a number of items on there. So we're working on that. Brenda, I'll have to work with you on that. On the fifteenth.
That's finance and instructional.
Yeah.
You're, you want to switch that to facility? Oh.
Right, we talked about that. Yep. And we might change that to facilities, because there are a number of items on the agenda for, I can, I had them here listed. I mean, we have things that we need to talk about with, with finance around end of the year fund balance, the audit renewal, fiscal year, a preview for, and discussions around fiscal year '24. We also have two significant items from New Hampshire Retirement. As you well know, there was legislation that was passed to allow a 7.5.
Lump sum.
Lump sum payment to all the school districts. A one-time. But there's also for year '24, a reduction in the costs for our group retirement. So both the teacher retirement group and other groups have a reduction. So we want to bring that forward to the finance and let them know what that, what that means in terms of our budget for the '24. We also have bond schedules, schedule, and why the Facilities Committee is important, because we want to discuss bond schedules, both with and without building aid at both sites. So we have a pretty robust agenda for that.
And a non-public session.
A non-public session on the Deerfield contract.
Full, full agenda.
That is a very full agenda. I think we alluded to the policy meeting on the seventeenth. The following week, we have Executive Committee followed by City and Community Relations. I set aside the 24th for back-to-school night at Keach Park, so I'll keep you posted on that evening event. I know last year you went. It was very successful. We have lots of things planned for that evening.
We need more of the really fantastic little dump.
Yeah, and there were a lot of, there were a lot of items made by our families and brought, so that was kind of, that was kind of fun. We hope that will happen again. A lot of planning has been done. Hey, first day of school is the 31st. I mentioned that earlier. Our two teacher workshop days are the 29th and 30th. August is a five-week month.
Kathleen, um, the, oh, the teacher, new teacher thing, is the 24th or the 25th? That you would like board members to attend is on which day? Do we know?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Okay.
I'll get that out to you.
So the 24th is the new teacher, right?
But the teacher welcome, is that the 29th?
Teacher welcome is, first day back is the 29th, right?
Is that going to be by school?
Well, I, I haven't, we haven't quite decided. We had it at Memorial Field last year, and it was pretty well received. We were outside. We were worried about COVID at the time, if you recall, but we had the marching band there.
The band got to show off their newest programs?
It was fun. I think, for the most part, I think people enjoyed it. We had coffee and yogurt, parfaits for everybody when they came in. So I haven't really talked to Mr. Redd yet about that, but if, weather permitting, I'd love to do that again. We good? Can I continue? September, obviously, we have a Labor Day weekend. First day of school, August 31st, a couple of days that week. Then we have a, a long weekend for Labor Day. Your board meeting will be on the 6th, given the holiday. Capital Facilities will be the following evening. Instructional that week. I've been looking at the dates, and I didn't get them all, but I know that I have on the 15th, Krista McAuliffe and Milbrook both have their back-to-school nights. I don't have the rest of them yet.
Beaver Meadow is on the calendar for the 14th, is the conflict I saw.
Okay. I haven't, yeah, I haven't heard from all the principals yet, so.
Concord High, the 21st. It's on the calendar.
They already posted them, okay. So I'll put those out and add those to your calendars and resend them. The 18th is the Concord Multicultural Festival at Keach Park. I know David Parker is very involved in that, and so we, we're going to join him, have a presence of our City and Community Relations Committee there, as well as some of our folks in the district. So that'll be a fun, that's a Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00. Executive Committee, City and Community Relations, and Communications and Policies on the 21st.
So we may, the Communication and Policy may be a bit of a conflict with that CHS.
Yeah, CHS.
Back-to-school affecting at least two members of that?
Yeah.
Committee? We may have to look at that.
Yep, I'll look at that one. Anything else?
When in October do you intend to bring forward any revisions to the budget? And so that we can have a Finance Committee meeting before that?
So the '23 budget?
Yeah. The first October meeting?
No, that August meeting.
You're going to bring suggest?
Bring some, some ideas, yes. Especially as it relates to the back-to-retirement and that.
Okay.
It's another one of those, we'll give you a one-shot boom, and then following, you know.
I'm going to add that.
Good news is the retirement system's going down a little bit for '24, '25, so that's good. Small, but already looking at '24. Started '23 a month ago, but I'm already looking at '24.
So that would be, it'd be, I, I think that's awesome to have that presentation and stuff. And then I would expect a Finance, Finance Committee meeting early in October, because our approval, final approval of budget will be the end of October.
Okay, that, and that was my question. So if we, if we needed one in September, if you were planning on doing it at the first meeting of the month, or if we could.
Okay. We're good with the, anything else?
I think you have enough.
I think so.
Unless, anybody else in the, look, see any meetings that were omitted and that needed to be added?
I do have just one question about, I know that in the fall, the ad hoc inter情ism committee does start again, correct? Do we have a, a first date for that first meeting yet? No, okay. Thank you.
Very good. No other calendar issues?
I guess I should, I, I should also note that the Concord Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee has been meeting. I have not been able to make any of the meetings this summer yet, but I'll make sure to report back what I hear on the August and September meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Any other input? Okay, with that, let's do, we'll go to a public comment session on any subject and made in accordance with Policy 132. Does anyone have any public comment on any topic? Not seeing any. Is there any further business before we go into a non-public session? Not seeing any hands. I would entertain a motion to go into non-public session in accordance with Superintendent, do you have?
It would be under 91A3 Personnel.
Well, Ben, so A is dismissal promotion or compensation, B is hiring, C is adversely affect your reputation.
B.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go into non-public session in accordance with RSA 91A colon 3, Robineau Rule 2B. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And as soon as you get that, Ms. Cannon, can you call roll, call vote as required?
Ms. Hastings?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Weinberg?
Aye.
Ms. West?
Aye.
Mr. Cotton?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
All right, we're in a non-public session. We went, upon coming out of the non-public session, I do not anticipate any business on the board other than the, the potential ceiling of the minutes from that session. So we will be ending our video broadcast as at this point. I just want to thank everyone. All right, we're in a non-public session.